Is that any better?
I hear you. That works.
Miracle. Sorry, having audio issues here.
Not a problem, not a problem. And I saw Maria, I think, tag in and then disappear. So maybe she was coming back. We'll give a minute for her. We have Bob, we have Vincent. This is good times. We have Brian, who did not bring enough beverages to share with everyone's. That's will be taken into account. It's seven. All right, let me see what else we got here. Well, I think Kathy, do you see Maria still trying to get in or have we? Have we lost her?
I don't see her.
I think she is actually she's conflicted out on two Tarbox Lane. Anyway, so we can perhaps just get started with that. Remind me, board members, was somebody else conflicted out on that one?
I think Bob was.
Yes.
All right, so that would be then Frank and myself. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Let's see what we've got. Bob, you're normally my guy to read these, so I will read this. A virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 18th, 2021. Oh, I don't want to start there. I want to start with Tarbox Lane. Where's the?
Oh, sorry.
I was just going by your agenda.
Yeah.
Notice, so we'll just go in order of that.
Here we are.
I'm pulling up on my screen. My eyes are not that good anymore. I get too many things all day. All right. Read the hearing for Two Tarbox Lane. It's a virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM on petition of Brian E. Scott, Two Tarbox Lane, North Reading, MA, map 74 parcel 102 for variance from the rear setback for a third bay to the existing two-car garage according to the requirements outlined in the dimensional and density regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Do we have a Mr. Brian Scott here? And we do, yes.
Oh, sorry, is I muted?
No worries. Kathy, great. I was going to ask you to put up that plan. And that's even better, maybe zoom in on it. And Brian, if you would just tell us what you're planning on doing with the space.
We currently have a two-car garage that's attached to the house. And we're basically looking to add a third bay. My same situation as a lot of families, two kids, and we get so much stuff. We just, we haven't been too big. We have a two-bay garage right now and no room for a car. So not one car. We have, you know, we so we have bikes, we have hockey shooting stuff. We're just looking to add, you know, put at least one car in it. We're going to configure it so we have be able to put both of our cars in and still have room for the kid's stuff.
Sure. And let's see, so you as part of this addition, it looks like there's going to be a new deck, small expansion to the kitchen, but it's just the garage that is within the setback. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, we're bumping up the back of the house, like the kitchen area, like two feet. And then we're incorporating right now, we have a bulkhead and that's being incorporated basically into the garage. So we're trying to lose the bulkhead. That's a big part of the project, too, is we want to be able to. You know, I don't know how many people have bulkheads. We don't use it. We've never, you know, we use it once a year, clean the spider webs and stuff. And so we're trying to make that an entrance into the house and that's going to go into the garage. So I mean, it's a multipurpose kind of addition as far as it's going to open up more use to the basement. And it's also obviously going to give us a space in the garage.
And is this, is this a one-story or two-story?
One-story.
Sorry.
The house is two-story, but the addition is one-story.
And the setback, what is the, what is the closest that it's going to be to the side and the rear? So that's the 429 and then 35. So we have a rear of 50 required and a side of 25. So it's just the rear setback?
Yeah.
Where should from? Do you happen to have any schematics to show what this proposed addition would look like? You know, kind of the side view or?
We have architectural drawings, but they're on paper. They're not, it's not something I could share on the computer at this time. I'm happy to forward them to you, though. I can scan. I can hold it up if you want.
While we, it's through the miracle of Zoom. If you just want to hold up something, just so we have a general idea of what it looks like. And then we'll ask you to, if you'd send in a copy for the files later.
Okay. I need to go grab it, so excuse me.
Not, not a problem. And while Mr. Scott is grabbing those.
That's the reason we went with the one-story is for looks. We were going to go two-story and it just, it would have looked great. And we had a really good architect working on it, but it was just wasn't, it didn't look as natural as we wanted it to. So that's why we went with the one-story. It's going to blend in very well. Our neighbors to the side, we know they're very close to us and they've seen the pictures and stuff. They're excited for it. It's yeah, it looks very nice. It's a project we've been planning for eight years and never got around to it. And yeah.
Frank and then any, any thoughts, questions on this?
Where is your septic?
In the front.
It's in the front.
Yeah. So the septic is probably about where, where it says lot 51 is probably where, probably where where it's first floor bays, you'll see like around there where that's written. So it's really nowhere near. Maybe between there and where it says 40,417 SV SF. So we have a lot, another big part, big reason we want to do the garage is we're making the, we just don't have a good turnaround up top. Driveway is 150 feet up a hill and and if Maria was here, she could attest to the fact that she, she drops my daughter off at the bottom of the driveway because she can't turn around and she's afraid of that driveway. So we try, we're going to make a big, we do the third bay, we're going to pave all that, just make it a huge. It's just kind of unfeasible right now with safety, because if you back up and you, you know, don't do it correctly, you could go off a cliff. And that's not, I've seen it too. Bob knows those and it's yeah, we're trying, you know, it's going to be the three bays, then we're going to make the garage a lot bigger. We're going to like incorporate a little basketball court, you know, put a basketball net and make it a fun area. But it's more to it than it's just a garage. It's going to be a paving and more of a safety thing, too, so we can get the cars to turn around.
Driveway off of Tarbox and then it kind of comes around to the side and goes in on the, or the?
Yeah, so if you came up McIntyre, you would take a right onto Tarbox, but you really wouldn't go right. You'd pretty much bear right off McIntyre. You just go straight up the hill. So if somebody's like at that stop on, on Tarbox, I couldn't even build my driveway just because of the angle it's at, so I have to kind of, you get a lot of confused people wondering why I'm standing there waiting for them to go.
I'm happy to, I can scan them and send them to you.
Okay, let's see.
It's tiny print. I know it's hard to see.
That actually is, it's actually working. Great.
That's what our next door neighbor would see. And then this is on the back of the house.
So there's a gable end. And this is the addition and the new deck from the backside. All right, so shed roof coming off for the addition. And if you can move that picture a little bit to my right, I'm not sure. All right. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's helpful to see the elevations as well. Jerry, can you remind me, what's the height limitation on? Do we even have one since it's connected? It's part of the home? It's not a separate garage?
No, it's not separate. The height limitation's a 35. And I can attest to what he said about his driveway. I pulled up in there today and backed all the way down.
All right.
Yeah, it's not. And if you, if you, so if you know, if you slip, if you go straight and your foot gets stuck on the gas, you know where you go.
Oh, you're in trouble.
There's no turnaround and it's just, we have more, we're going to widen that and, you know, kind of double it as a little little basketball net and kind of double as a little court for my son and, but you know, driveway's not fun and that's, we love the look of the house up the hill, but it's, it comes with this, obviously, its downfall.
Yeah, and extra fun with snow and ice, I'm sure.
I, I snow blow it and I'm probably the only one in the whole neighborhood that doesn't have a plow. And people ask me, I'm like, a plow wouldn't, wouldn't make it up in a, what, two years, two or three years ago, a friend of mine, you know, one morning, he said, oh, I'm going to plow the driveway when he's sleeping. I'm not, I'm going to tell him after six in the morning and he slid down the bottom of my mailbox. So I was like, that's why I don't do it. So.
Got it. Kathy, do we have any, any butters here to comment?
I don't see any, but he did submit letters today.
Did you? Did I? Do I see these? I see a plan. I see another plan. I see.
I sent them separately this afternoon. I didn't come in until this afternoon.
I got you. All right. There's a see, we have comments from the CPC, Community Planning Commission, who says, "Per your request, Community Planning Commission has reviewed the above referenced application, has the following comments. The application should contain more information, including an elevation drawing, agreed to see what it looks like from the neighbors and from the street, as well as a number of stories." Also agreed, "For proximity to the septic system, so the proposed can be fully understood hardship." All right, that's from the CPC. Thank you. And did you say there was, was there in a butter letter?
They were sent separate from the packet.
So I saw the packet that had the CPC letter.
Let me, let me stop sharing until I can.
And then potential findings for us.
Antoinette Marino, emails from a butter. That's who it's from. I can read them to you.
My maiden name, Marino. My email is still in my maiden name, 17 years later. Kathy, if you would, I'm not seeing them in my inbox. I'm seeing the memo from the CPC draft decisions and then the, your CB filings.
Okay.
When was it, when was it sent? Maybe it's, maybe just.
A couple hours ago?
Yeah, it was probably around two or three.
I got a two o'clock and a 4:57 and not seeing it in either of those two. But if you or anyone else who had it would like to read those into the, into the file, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I have from John BYSI, Beisowitz. So funny, I was actually thinking about this yesterday and how given the ceiling height in your garage, you could add a third bay and put a lift in so you can fit two cars in the new bay. So he seems to be in favor. Carol Cobell, thank you, Antoinette Palas. No, let me know if you need anything else from us, Carol. So Antoinette sent a letter to the neighbors telling them what they were doing. And this was their responses. M. De Plazy, good luck and you'll have no issues as long as there's no opposition. A letter, a letter or someone in attendance is what would be helpful. I assume your closest neighbor on the side with the garage would be the PBDs. Barbara H. Thorstand, I hope it all works out. These houses should have had three bays. That's the last one.
All right.
Small, it's a very small two-bay. Actually, it's not even a, it's built in 99 when everyone, I think, had a Camry or an Altima in the garage. Now we have two SUVs and it's even without anything else in it, like we can barely open it. But design of it, we all know when they build a house, speculation, it's they, it's a 22-foot wide currently garage and I think they don't even build them anymore into 24-wide.
So. Yep, understood. It's amazing how much you can fill those up so quickly with a couple of kids and their gear. All right, that being said, I think we would ask that you send in a copy of the elevation so we can include those in, in the, in your file and any other comments, Frank? Comments, questions on this one?
No, I think I'm good.
Ben?
No, no questions. Pretty straightforward.
All right, I think it looks good. I like the, the elevations look nice. Apparently, no neighbors are against this and you have some neighbors in favor, which is wonderful. So I would like to close the public hearing. Then would you like to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, if I had the paperwork out. Kathy, can you put that back up?
Um, the hearing notice?
Yeah.
It's, it's here. Oh, share it. I'm sorry. I stopped sharing.
I switched computers, so all my stuff is on my other one.
Oh.
Madam Chair, I move favorable action on the petition of Brian E. Scott, Two Tower Box Lane, North Reading, Mass., map 74 parcel 102 for variance from the rear setback for a third bay to the existing two-car garage according to the requirements outlined in the dimensions and density regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws.
Is, and before we second that, I'd like to put, just add the, the square or the footage. I think, trying to pull, find my plan again. Were we looking for eight feet from the rear lot line?
I think it's actually seven, but I gave it eight just for.
Just in case you, when you're there and they, if the actual on the ground is a couple inches off, you won't be in violation. So I'd like to add to that motion, eight feet from the rear lot line in accordance with the plans submitted and the elevations, which we saw, and to be submitted to the file and adding that it is a one-story addition.
I'll second that as amended.
Right. All in favor? Frank?
Hi.
Vincent?
Hi.
Jennifer? Hi. All right, so congratulations on that. We will sign up the decision. It'll go to the town clerk after we sign it. And then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Right. Next on our agenda.
We can find out, right?
71 Main Street.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Happy.
Thank you very much.
Right, so public hearing, a virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM on the petition of Michael Hirschberg, representative for Volta Inc., who are seeking to appeal the building commissioner's decision and a request and request of variance to install two new electric vehicle charging stations, each having a scrolling signage on them in the parking area of the existing Stop and Shop at 271 Main Street, North Reading, MA, 01864 map 13 parcel 14, according to the North Reading zoning bylaws, section 200-80A prohibited signs. All right, Mr. Hirschberg.
Excellent.
All right, your turn. Would you tell us what's your, what you're planning to do and what these things might look like?
Absolutely. Honorable members of the board, thank you so much for hearing the matter this, this evening. And I also want to just thank both Jerry and Danielle for working with us closely on these applications to get us here tonight before the ZBA. So to really get to the matter of what we're, we're working with, you can see the L2 stations there. More or less, these are very sleek media displayed media stations. To give you a little bit of background on Volta, we're an electric vehicle infrastructure company that utilizes sponsorship to fund installation and maintenance of our stations. So in that regard, there's no cost passed down to the driver. So we work to try to serve a public benefit by installing electric vehicle chargers. As of course, you know, everything is evolving with infrastructure and EV adoption continues to grow. Most drivers charge their vehicles at home and then go off where they may grab a bit of charge at grocery stores or visiting malls, et cetera, to avoid running out of juice. So what we're seeking to do is to install these two media stations at the Stop and Shop on Main Street. And they are to be placed close to the front of the store in order to display our, our stations as close to the entranceway to the store to avoid being anywhere near the public rights of way. Each station is about 200 feet away from the public rights of way. And so on August 16th, we were denied our application. So tonight we are here to appeal that because we believe our installation falls within the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws, referring specifically to 200-76 of the town's bylaws. We believe these, this installation would promote the general welfare of the community, protect public health and safety and welfare, reduce traffic hazards. The stations serve a public interest because they are providing electric vehicle charging without charging a driver any cost at all to charge their vehicles because we are ultimately providing that, using sponsorship in order to fund all that charging. Ultimately, the stations are aesthetically pleasing. I can certainly, Kathy, I was wondering if you wouldn't mind, I can share my screen and I can show you some installations that are already established, if that's okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Can everyone see my screen? Okay, excellent. So this is a station installation in Walpole, recently complete. So this is from about, probably about 15, 20 feet away. I'm taking this image here. See, as you can see, the further you get away, the smaller the signage gets. Gets smaller, gets smaller. So you kind of get the picture. I'll go a little bit closer to public right of way so you can really, yeah. So this was just about on the street, I forget the name of the road, but out in Walpole. So you can hardly see the stations there. We're really trying to attract the interest of persons walking in and out of Stop and Shop through the media signage and not trying to capture any, you know, potential drivers, creating a distraction. Of course, any vehicle that is traveling in front of Stop and Shop would be operating at a low speed. Our stations also operate with ambient lighting in order to avoid creating a distraction. And you can see also just from the installation here, you can see that, you know, we did a concrete pad. I'll zoom in a little. And really just tried to make them look as sleek as we could. This person parked on the wrong side, but you kind of get the idea that the court can also reach out. And we placed ballards around them in order to protect them, also given the snow that can come up in the winter time. So truly, I guess, with our appeal portion of this, we are really seeking to say that we're really operating within the spirit of code. And then really to seek a variance, obviously, under chapter 48 of Massachusetts general laws and under the, the bylaws of the zoning board. We believe that the literal enforcement of, just a moment, the enforcement of 200-80 really creates a substantial hardship for Volta because we would be prohibited from using our business model in the highway business district, which is designed to attract retailing and services under that 200-39A 1A of the zoning bylaws. We're operating as a service. Volta's purpose is to provide EV drivers with a public benefit without incurring a financial detriment. Volta offsets a lot of its costs, a lot of the kind of the detail I've already provided. And really, we believe that the relief sought doesn't create a substantial detriment to the public good or otherwise intended the bylaw because such messaging creates a public benefit by providing messages from promoting local business to displaying emergency information. And truly, I mean, we, our electronic messaging boards change every eight seconds and that eight seconds is based on a recommendation from the Federal Highway Administration as far as determining what would create a distraction. There is also, I should note, no motion implied with the stations. The stations just change every eight seconds with a flip. But it's like a quick, not, not meant to imply motion, but rather just a quick change. And so ultimately, we believe that we're acting within the spirit of the bylaws. The signage is really only viewable from within the property itself as we are about 200 feet away and as shown through a lot of the images I also presented to, to really try to just attract the attention of people that are already present on the property. The property itself is also, of course, artificial topography because it's, you know, a unique quality to the area as a parking lot. So for a lot of this new infrastructure that's coming in with media station, electric vehicle chargers, we believe that this is a unique quality to have in a parking lot. And it just also will attract more people to visit North Reading and to do their stuff and do their shopping at Stop and Shop in the Atlantic Plaza. So I will stop there as I kind of ramble out a lot and just look for any questions or, or answer any questions.
Yeah, I, one of my first questions is, do we even have, do we have the authority to grant a variance for this? Because 280 says that this large category of signage is expressly prohibited. And there in 80, in 200-81, there is certain signs that may be permitted in the business and industrial districts provided a permits provided from the building inspector. They know this is, it's, this is sort of a new technology and it's not something that would have been considered or at the time, the, the code was. would have been considered or, at the time the, the code was written.
Of course.
That's evolving. There were not electric vehicles.
Yes.
Was drafted, but I'm just, before we get too far down the, the road on kind of the details of the plan, I just want to make sure that you're, we're in the right place and that we have the authority to do this. Let's see, applications for special permits. And I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you yet. I just need to go through the bylaws for a second here.
Sure.
I thought CPC had oversight for signage permits. Yeah, I would hate, you'd be wasting your time here if we can't, if we don't have the authority to.
Yeah, certainly. I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's see.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair, while you're looking?
Question, please do.
Michael, I'm very familiar with Reading Electric, and because this is part of a monopolistic territory of theirs. Have you coordinated with them, this idea, and, and, you know, whether or not, like, you know, they're, they know about the load, potential load addition in that area?
Yes. So, we typically actually don't coordinate with utilities on these particular projects, and the reason why is we're going to be using the existing service that Stop &amp; Shop already has. So we'd be tapping onto an existing, existing panel that we've already provided, performed a load study on, just to ensure that the load would suffice. These are at a much lower voltage. They're at about 120 volts. So typically, it's not enough power that we would need to bring in a new service.
Is this a level one or a level two?
Level two.
And the rate from, from the Reading is the same as, for instance, what anyone in the plaza would be paying?
Correct, yes, sir.
So the store closes at 10, maybe 11? Would you, would this be available 24/7?
Technically, yes, but we can also, in the past, we've worked with different municipalities if there are specific regulations already in place to turn off the stations outside of store hours.
And when the station is off, is the, the advertising still on?
No, the station goes black.
And I think, under 281B, shopping and business centers, though any number of businesses greater than one that share the same lot for common points of ingress or egress and, and/or a common parking facilities, such centers shall be bound by the following restrictions on signage, and then a master, first requirement is a master signage plan. For any center which the business owners proposes to erect one or more signs requiring a permit, property owner must submit a special permit to the CPC, a master signage plan specifying the standards for consistency among all signs, and containing the following, blah, 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 blah. So, Jerry, just sort of some input from you on how these are done historically. I know, for example, when the plaza wanted to amend their, their signage up front, that went through the CPC, we, we commented on it in terms of the, the additional size that was requested by the plaza owner for that, for the signage up front, but it was a CPC jurisdiction. Not, I mean, not that I want, I don't want to cede authority or responsibility. If it's ours, I just want to make sure that it is, and I'm not certain that it is because the ones I've seen in the past haven't, haven't come to us. Jerry, do you have some?
No, the only input I have is, is I went by the 200-80, and I also prohibited signage. And I also spoke with one of the CPC members that said they thought that they had an oversight on their part, so.
I'm sorry, that they thought they had oversight?
They thought, they, they thought they may have had, had an oversight.
I'm not sure I'm following you. They thought they may have had an oversight with?
Relative to the signage, they didn't realize it was scrolling.
Oh. Did CPC approve this?
CPC gave them, will give them an approval, but their own, the issue is, is the scrolling and signage, which is signage. It does move every eight to 10 seconds, so as far as I'm concerned, this is, this is scrolling. It is prohibited. And I think CPC gave their, they may have given a, Kathy, did they give a?
Did they give a letter?
Their, yeah, did they give what they, what they?
They did, and I.
They're on it.
Michael, were you in front of the CPC?
I only corresponded with the CPC via email, so I did not go before that. But I did work somewhat with Danielle McKnight.
Okay, who's the planning?
Like, why aren't you going before them?
I, we have not filed to do so.
Okay. So they submitted a memo, if you want to, I can read it.
Sure.
For your request, the Community Planning Commission has reviewed the above referenced application and offers the following comment. The CPC supports the decision of the building inspector. Thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to comment.
So, all right, well, putting jurisdiction aside for just a moment, because it sounds like, but maybe we shouldn't, it sounds like I think you're going to need to go to them.
Okay.
And what I would suggest, because I, I mean, see the moving flashing signs are, are just outright prohibited. That gives one of those sort of interesting.
So is CPC, did CPC accede to Jerry's denial? And are they just going to say the same? Because Jerry denied it because he, he sees it as scrolling. So CPC sees it, when they say we support the building inspector's decision, is it, isn't that, in other words, is, will they just say, we're already more or less acceded?
So, yeah, even if you did go to CPC, it's like, I mean, they, they've definitely put out a, a viewpoint on it, but even if it went to them, I'm not sure they have the authority either to approve it because it falls within the section of prohibited signage. So it's not something that could be allowed by a special permit, or I mean, as, the way I'm reading this is that, you know, we have several categories of signs, signs which were allowed, signs which require a special permit, and then this whole section of signs which are not allowed. And it seems like neither board should be able to grant permission for something which is explicitly a prohibited sign, but if it were a sign that fell within the allowed types of signs, then the board who would be addressing that would be CPC, which is, I mean, I think that it's, what I would suggest is, because I, I don't want to, I'm not comfortable just saying no, because I'm not, I'm not certain on this yet, but what I would like to do is, if it was acceptable to the, to the applicant, is perhaps extend this one to next hearing to give us a, a chance to confirm. I don't want to just say this is, this is a denial if there's, if, if we're, if I'm misunderstanding this, but I'm, right now, I'm not seeing how, how either board really has the authority to approve this, and, which seems odd.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. We'd be happy to, to wait till the next hearing, just to allow the board to have enough time to, to consider whether they have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Is the petition just going to be burdened by the term expressly prohibited? You know, to me, that seems to be, I'm not too sure CPC is going to be able to move off of that either, and I'm not looking to prolong this because it just, this is falling into that area of statutory law that didn't anticipate innovation, if you will. Yeah.
Bob, I think that might be the, the issue, that it's, it's something which the current bylaws expressly prohibit. So I'm not, I'm just thinking, like, the only, the thing that I'm thinking of that's a little bit similar, and I'm not sure how that gets permitted, and it's much smaller scale, is at the 7-Eleven gas station on the
Gas TV.
On the gas thing, they've got that little, like, the size of a, of a small laptop or smaller, just scrolling advertisement that kind of tells you to come in and buy your coffee or whatever they're doing. So I'm not sure how that was permitted. I mean, it's sort of this on a much smaller scale. Jerry, do you have any sense on how gas stations are allowed to have little info, info screens?
I wish I could tell you yes on that, but I do.
Okay, that, fair enough. That's it. Michael, I'm, I'm a little conflicted here because I understand it's, this is new technology and we're trying to write a, a service here.
Absolutely.
Michael, in your past applications to other towns for setups similar to this, have you run into the same kind of question, which is dated bylaws, which
Yes.
really, and if anything, maybe you could just make note of those to us so that we can possibly compare and consult if that might be a consideration for this petition?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Breen. So, I mean, what we've been running into, I guess, for the most part is, I mean, we'll do a number of different solutions. I mean, we've done tax amendments as well, where we've, you know, created, you know, a new ordinance for a town, and then it goes before the planning, or before, wait, yeah, went before the zoning board for a vote to see if they would adopt it. We've done, you know, for the most part, I mean, I myself, although I'm not representing Volta as counsel, I am also an attorney, and so I've kind of gone into a lot of these ordinances myself, and picked apart, I guess, kind of the different definitions of a sign. I know with North Reading, it's pretty succinct about just kind of how it attracts the eye, and it doesn't really distinguish between public and private property. So I know that it's very much in North Reading kind of cut and dry, but obviously, you know, what we try to at least consider is to just sort of broaden the scope on, you know, on what a sign is, is, you know, really try to relay back to different towns that we provide an essential service. I mean, sorry, we, our essential purpose is to provide electric vehicle charging. We just do that with a media station sign that then pays for the bills.
And you're, the, the unit that you have, are they all, is this the standard sort of shape, size, height?
Yes, this is the one size we use, and so it's 55-inch media screen, so it's about like a 55-inch TV turned vertically, and then they stand about seven feet tall.
Okay. And what sort of content is the?
So, we partner with, obviously with Stop &amp; Shop, and so they'll display a number of ads, you know, from Smart Water to different things that have appeared in the past. And then we also have, we have different towns depending on the regulations. We've put up, for example, we have a station in Wakefield, and we've done Sabatino's Insurance, we've done another, I forget the name, but it was a, some form of like an air conditioning company that's local. So we've done a number of different, more or less promoting local business, and it's basically anyone that wants to buy a space, but of course, we're also on Stop &amp; Shop's property, so anything that we're going to do is going to be very in, in good taste, right? Of course, we, we wouldn't want to display content that would be considered malice or, or just malicious content in any way whatsoever.
So do they have oversight or any sort of consent to content?
I believe they do, in some regard, have, I mean, I'm pretty certain that they do. I, I can't completely comment. I've panned from what I've seen, I believe so.
Is there an audio comment component?
No, no audio.
Okay, it's all visual, okay?
Okay, Bob, that's a great, good point.
And did any of the towns or authorizing municipalities retain any control over the content?
Um, so, that, no, they did not. I mean, we could certainly, I mean, what we've done in the past to for other towns is, I remember one town, this is an example, and I don't believe it was in Massachusetts, but it was some other town, I believe, New York. They wanted to display them, like the Little League schedule, that's another thing that we can do, or like emergency messages, you know, obviously through COVID. I know a lot of our California stations were displaying just kind of like a number of, you know, you know, especially at the beginning of COVID, of, you know, hand sanitizer, and all of this is available in store kind of thing, and making sure that people were kind of aware of what was going on, numbers of cases that were rising, etc. In natural disasters, we've also had stations available as well that will display messages for the public. So, certainly, there's, you know, the, the municipality can tap in, but as far as regulating speech to, I mean, certainly, there's First Amendment considerations that are taken into account.
So I guess, in the point we are at tonight, we just have to really decide if, if the bylaws are just too, I, I think we, it might be best if we do continue it and, and try to figure this out. To me, that seems the more practical course in the immediate.
Yeah, so we're not taking up your time tonight. Let us, I'll take a, take a look back at this and give a little thought, and then we can reconvene. Kathy, when are we back? Is it December what? Kathy, when are we back? Is it December? What?
By the way, Michael, do you have a timeline on this?
December 9th is when we continue to.
Okay, December 9th. Mr. Breen, we don't have like a specific timeline in place. Obviously, we want to work with the town closely, giving. Give everyone a chance to kind of make sure that the town has the authorization to move forward. So certainly, I mean, I mean, I guess in one respect, you know, as soon as possible, but at the same time, we also understand that, you know, this is very new and. We want to make sure that we give the town the opportunity to really understand whether they have authority here.
Good. So if I might ask you to request a continuance until December 9th, and we'd be happy to continue this.
Excellent. Yes, so the applicant wishes to request a continuance here.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for doing that. And then. So we will see you on the 9th and revisit this and hopefully have a. Definitive answer on at least whether or not we can go forward or if this is going to require a revision to the town bylaws for it to be considered. Or if you should be in front of our friends over at CPC.
Wonderful. I appreciate the board's time and thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Absolutely. Yes, you as well.
Thank you.
All right, board, I think we just have some minutes to approve, which. Looked good to me. Anyone else have any comments?
Do we have to continue the 33 Anthony Road since the applicant didn't appear?
You're right. That makes sense.
Or do we, you know, Kathy, I understand from your message today that. You out you reached out, but there wasn't any.
So we they didn't get their butter notice in time, so they couldn't notify their butters. So I told them you'd have to. Be on the next meeting, but they were advertised in the newspaper.
Okay.
So if you just want to continue with that, fine.
Take a motion to move the formally continue the 33 Anthony Road variance request to our meeting of December 9.
Second.
All in favor?
Aubrey and I.
And we go GI.
All right, I'll throw it it. Jennifer. And anyone's welcome to. Great. So I think it's just meeting minutes. Looked good to me. I'd like to make a motion to approve them unless anyone else had any comments or or edits to the minutes.
Second.
You all in favor, Bob?
Aubrey and I.
And Raguchi I.
Jennifer, I. All right, we have been requested by. Our local broadcast, who is it to to run these meetings? Either live or or video. Tapes of them after local public access. How do my? Members feel about this opportunity to be just just that famous?
More practical question is, is it ever going to go back into town hall? Is there any? Any? Need thought for that either?
I haven't heard anything. Kathy, have you?
I haven't, but I think it was extended until April and unless the governor decided to change that.
No, that's that's.
They'll eventually. Make it public hearings in person is what I was told.
And the TA is also advocating Zoom meetings as well because the uptick in COVID.
No, it's definitely very, I think, convenient for applicants and their council to be able to just pop in by Zoom. It's it's. You know, miss being able to see people live and have that little bit of of interaction. I know the prior board was not. Interested in having live have have the live meetings taped live. I know these are being recorded and. I think Kathy, are they already put up on on YouTube or on?
I think I have to share, allow them to have it. So I asked, I did give him the last one, but.
It is a public record.
Yeah.
On CNN.
Yes.
Close to it. It's just I it I the only question I had is if we were in person meetings, if we were actually live, you would have people that would be able to suddenly take to the mic and offer a thought. From the general public, maybe, you know, at least try to. So. If.
Oh, they, I mean, if it's live, I don't think I don't think it'd be interactive. It's just posted. So if you're at home, you can watch us on local cable access channel, whatever we are.
And the good news is nobody will do that, I don't think.
You'd be surprised how many people don't have a life.
I wouldn't be surprised about that, but I can't even imagine watching one of these if I didn't like understand what was going on.
There's got to be better. I mean, I know sometimes you look through all the cable channels and you're like, there's nothing. Why is there nothing I want to watch?
I'm gonna watch the.
I have to admit, I don't even know where it is on the on my Fios viewing channels.
I have no idea.
We become local celebrities.
I can, I'm sure that will be it. If we if we ever get Elm Street, Elm Street, the 40B project back up. That sort of thing might get some attention, the three car. Garage variance is.
Or more chickens.
Or chickens. We haven't had a goat in a long time. I don't know what happened to goats. We had goats for a couple of years. Goats were big. So. All I will say is even even today, anything we say on these meetings, it is being recorded and it is a public record. So. To the extent anyone ever wants to go back, if they're challenging one of our decisions, this is all. Available.
No, you know, that last that last piece that we had from Volta is an interesting one because it's. It's almost like it's a billboard and it's it's a charger. The charging. You'd have to plug that in for two days to charge your car full based based on what it's charging at. So it it it's just interesting how it it's really more of an advertising play, which is how they're making money on it.
So someone will leave their car out there like for two days in a parking lot?
Some, so some of my clients have put them like Littleton's a good example. They were offering free charging in front of their Littleton Electric site. And they realized it was the same people and you know, like another guy with the Tesla. You know, of course, they need to charge for free, right? That they would drop off one guy's Tesla, the other one in the Tesla would drive him home. And then when he was full, but they were they were fast charged. So when they were full, the other one would go back and fill for free. And the, you know, they drive for days and that was their their thing until they started charging them the going rate. And then, you know, they weren't happy when they got their bill.
Interesting.
So but it but it is something that, you know, Jerry's talked about it. Bob, you talked about it in looking at a lot of the. The stuff that's on, you know, the town record that, you know, maybe should be looked at for things, you know, new technologies. Because there are going to be a lot of, you know, I I don't know whether it's even straightforward to put in some of these these other. Charging stations and where they get located and, you know, how far they need to be away from. You know, there's some charging stations now that have storage in them, so they have battery storage, you know, which is. At at times could be dangerous. But there's in in a lot of places, that's how they're popping up everywhere is that there's no regulations for them.
And that's and I think this is a really interesting conversation. I want to be careful since we are not in the public hearing, we have to save this till. December to have some of this this discussion, but the point about charging, is it? How much charging is actually being provided to someone versus is this really just a billboard which? From my review so far, please, I want to take a look. I'm not sure that there's the. Authority for either the CPC or ourselves to to grant that. But it did make me think, Jerry, there's that flashing sign up by the motorcycle tuning. Place is that? Right up on Main Street past wherever they.
I haven't noticed that flashing sign. You need to point, somebody needs to point that out. I'd be more than happy to tell them. You can't have that flash.
I thought it was flashing. Maybe it was just.
I have not seen a flashing sign yet.
It I think that what catches your eye for that is that it's. It may, it kind of has that standalone. Look to it. In other words, they have their. How did the bylaws refer to it as the? The master sign that's on the building, then they might have an individual, they might have, they might have put up an individual. Electric sign to just kind of. You know, akin to. You know, free oil change like that kind of thing, and it but I think it's bright and I don't think it flashes, but I do believe.
It's maybe just because it's a new sign. That wasn't that hasn't been there historically. So now it catches my eye every time I I drive up.
Well, what's interesting about that is that that might not comply under the.
But that was my question when I was reading through the bylaws. It's like, wait a minute, where that sign come from? So.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing a flash in sign here. If I did see one. Wouldn't be up there. Jerry, I noticed some prog some progress on the on the other Main Street location. Say that again, I didn't, you you broke up.
The former U-Haul location is is seem to have had some. Physical changes to it if you drive by it.
Everybody has moved.
I think they're back on the agenda.
It appears that the service station has moved out. The U-Haul interest is no longer there and the lot is is is. You know, nine tenths empty of what it used to be. I mean, it's. It's it's notable in that regard, but I, again, I think they're coming back before us. So again, I think it's the public hearing. As far as I think we should just draw this back to the question of, I have no problem with the public broadcasting.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
I I think that, you know, all things being said, you know, I think. And what's interesting is is that for any of these conversations, the idea that it it might alert people that the bylaws are. A little dated so that if, you know, when it will come eventually and it will come time to do them. The public record would be all the more. Established. From just availability of of the meetings to whoever wants to watch. And I just think the pub as if it's going to be a live broadcast, it just has to be understood. That it is to the not so much to us, but to the each of the applicants and or anybody giving statement. Just so they know that it's, you know.
You have to acknowledge that it's being recorded when you sign into this meeting.
I agree. I I think it's if if that's what they want. There's no reason why it shouldn't. You know, I think more input is always better than less input. You know, I think the previous. The history of this board has a lot of secrecy behind it, I think, and. I think having more openness will be appreciated. And like you said, I I agree. I I think. There are some things that if we say they seem dated, that we may get some. People in the public that say, or, you know, for that matter, maybe even some of the select board members that jump on and. Agree that something should be changed.
All right.
I'm fine with that, too. I don't have any preference either way, honestly. It's fine.
I don't think it's. Drake.
I know totally. I, you know, I haven't been on the board, I feel, long enough to have a decision, you know, have a preference either way, but. I can tell you, growing up, I used to watch the Town of Plymouth community stuff because my father watches it still to this day. So.
That's why you're doing this now.
Also, yeah, that's what got me kind of interested in it, right? So, no, I think it's fine.
You will all be local celebrities now when you show up at. Wherever in town.
We need to stop at Stop and Shop and.
Exactly. I'm sure autographs, pictures, selfies, the whole thing.
Excuse me, Maria, can I have your autograph?
There's all the family taking the car off county by county.
They might come up and ask us questions if anybody actually watches it.
Any other news or info for the board?
I don't think so.
No, we get 12 minutes to kick off.
I know. So I want to let everyone go. I've been waving to all the college post-college kids who have been coming through my foyer on the way to watch the games. So we're going to have a crowd here. It's going to be good. Hope everyone has a fantastic Thanksgiving, get some get some time off. Oh, yeah, it sounds like it's they're pre-gaming. I can hear them.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
That's all. Thanks.